Okay, it being seven o'clock in a full night and the quorum of the board is present. I'll call to order the May 9th regular session of the Acton Board of Selectment. First item on the agenda is citizens' concerns. Yes, sir? Please state your name and your address.
Sure. My name is Barry Elkin and I live at 57 Skyline Drive. And I'm here to talk about the, very briefly, about the Concord proposal for Nagagpon as a prize. And I'd like to raise two issues. If we go back to the meeting that was held in January that had the large resident turnout, Selectmen Board hearing, two comments that I'm hearing rather regularly as it relates to that meeting is, number one, the great job you guys did and how seriously you are taking residents' concerns. The other comment I'm hearing is how much of that meeting was consumed by Concord's presentation and how little time that left for residents who either were not able to make a statement or had to abridge their statement. In light of that, I'd like to respectfully request that the Board of Selectmen enforce Section 5.2.1 of the Site Plan, Acton Site Plan Rules and Regulations, that says the applicant should be limited to a 10-minute presentation, except for good reason. Something for your consideration, which I think will make the July 18th meeting much more productive. And the reason I'm bringing it up in May for a July meeting is, should you opt to take that route, I think it's only fair to give Concord some notice that they'll be limited to a 10-minute presentation. So that's point one. And point two is, we have reason to believe that the entire project is in violation of Massachusetts state law. I know that look, it means I'm crazy, I see it from my wife twice a day.
You know, I'm gonna interrupt you here for a second. I mean, this is in a formal legal process. We have a hearing that's still open during which we will be taking evidence when we formally reconvene the hearing in July. I have questions about whether it's appropriate for you to be making a legal argument outside of the context of the hearing. You're certainly entitled to submit whatever written documents you want to the record of the hearing, but where the other side isn't here, I don't believe we should be considering legal arguments that you're making when we're outside of the hearing process.
I understand that, and the reason I'm bringing it up now is I think it would be fair to Concord for you to hear what I have to say, and in any meetings this board or any other Acton entity might have with Concord before July 18th, they'd be given a heads-up on this.
Well, I mean, I'm happy to hear what you have to say, but if you want us to consider it as part of the record of the hearing, you'll have to either, you know, make that statement when the hearing reconvenes or submit it as a written document that would become part of the hearing record.
I can do either one, whichever you prefer. If you'd like to hear it now for informational purposes, I'd be glad to do that. If not, I can wait until July 18th.
Usually, I mean, citizens' concerns doesn't go into great depth about something that's not on our agenda. Usually, it's an issue that goes to the town manager, it's something for us to think about, but, and I understand that you want us to take a look at the Site Plan Regulation about limiting the applicant's presentation to 10 minutes and that sort of thing, but I do think, my sense, and Peter is the chairman, he's also a lawyer, is that it would be better if you submitted something and then we took it up at either, I mean, a future meeting where it's on the agenda, or it could be at July, the July 18th meeting.
Okay, then why don't I just hold off and present it in July?
I mean, to your point, there is a meeting, we are, this came up in a public meeting, the last Selectments meeting we have, there is gonna be a meeting with Concord to discuss the project. So if you, and you want us to, as I understand, to communicate to Concord your concerns as part of that process. If you want to give us a two-sentence, but not a total legal argument about what message you want us to communicate to Concord, I think that's fair.
Okay. I think the very short story is this. They're borrowing, at a recent, their recent town meeting, they indicated that their, and they voted on, their Article 28 was that they voted on borrowing $16.5 million for the project. Except for $1 million that is being used for something else, the remainder of the $15.5 million is being borrowed to fund the project. Having said that, and again, I'll leave out all the details of the argument, the law that gave them the right to take water from Nagagpon, the law of 1884 specifically says they can borrow no more than $50,000. Now, it says nothing about adjusted for inflation, and even if it did, according to the Federal Reserve's numbers, $50,000 in 1884 is only a little bit less than a million three now. So they're borrowing more than they're allowed to borrow by the law that gave them rights to access the water.
Okay. We get what your point is, and we have counsel who's, you know, advising the town on this, a special counsel, so if you want to submit something in writing, we'll send it to counsel and become part of the record, and we'll certainly consider it when we take under advisement the request for a special permit.
Okay, will do. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
I just wanted to say, I continue to really appreciate the neighbors' hard work on looking into these things that you've all been doing.
Any other citizens' concerns? Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the chairman's update. Let me just say, it's my first meeting as the chair. I think one of the responsibilities of the chair is to be a clearinghouse for information about all the different aspects of town government and what's happening. There's always a ton of things going on, so I'm gonna try to focus on getting as wide a distribution as possible, as much information out to the public and various stakeholders and all the different areas of town government, so that people can be aware of what's going on and help us try to make decisions about things that will help the town improve. We're also going to spend more time this year focusing on using technology to provide more citizen access to the Selectmen, including talking to the cable TV folks to run some shows of Selectmen interest, possibly social media aspects, of which I could not get on Twitter if you paid me, but we'll look at ways of possibly doing those kind of things to communicate with citizens as well. And also importantly, I think we want to encourage more volunteers on town boards, find ways to recruit more people. We have lots of people who commit a lot of time, their personal time, to help town boards out. They're the lifeblood of the town. They help us execute our master plan goals and move the town forward in improving our services, so we're going to find ways in which we can try to recruit more volunteers into town government, always a big help to us in terms of the kind of openings we have on boards currently in town. And this may not be completely updated, but the various boards that now have openings for full members are the Acton 2020 Board, which deals with the master plan goals, and shepherding and overseeing other town boards that are working to implement those goals; the Zoning Board of Appeals, which deals with requests for variances and other relief from the zoning board under certain statutes. That's a critical board, and I understand we're gonna have several vacancies that we'll need to fill in order to allow that board to continue to function. The Cable Advisory Committee has openings for full members. The Economic Development Committee, if you're a business owner in town, the Economic Development Committee might interest you to spend some time helping out those issues. The Green Advisory Board, we always need people with environmental experience in town to try to help us improve pollution issues, water, air, and those kind of issues. Morrison Farm Committee is working on developing a plan for the Morrison Farm site. The Planning Board has openings. They deal with zoning issues in town, special permits under certain zoning aspects, subdivisions, new subdivision layouts, assigned permits, and any changes in the zoning bylaw that the town is interested in implementing have to go through the Planning Board first. I understand we'll have a couple of vacancies on that board in the near future, and we need to fill those in order to allow that board to function as well. The South Acton Train Station Advisory Committee has openings for permanent members, and a lot of the boards in town also have openings for advisory, or advisory board members, associate members, and that's a good way to get involved in town government, to learn how a board operates and eventually move into a permanent position. So we encourage more citizens in town to get involved in all of our town boards. In terms of things that are happening currently, the last few weeks, the Health Insurance Trust has raised rates for town and school employees' insurance, health insurance, a big cost driver in town. We raised rates 4%. This year has been positive in terms of both income to the trust and expenses to the trust, which we obviously predict at the beginning of the year, but the trust is running in the black, if that's positive, if they're running positive. Always get that confused between electrical and finance, but they've got a positive balance. The Capital Planning Committee is going to be moving forward. We had a tour of the schools for Selectmen, Janet Franny, Katie Green, and myself toured some, four elementary schools, three elementary schools with the superintendent. The schools have put together a capital planning committee and done a facilities study, half of a facilities study, which identified the repairs that need to be done in all of their buildings. They need to complete the second half of that, which puts costs on those repairs and suggestions for expanding the schools or building new schools. It's clear that the three schools, we looked at Conant, Douglas, and Gate School, they're over 50 years old, they're not designed for the current educational plans that the schools have in place, they're overcrowded desperately, they don't have the facilities they need to deal with all the different kinds of special needs education they have to provide for students. So capital planning is gonna be a big issue going forward. The town and the schools will have a joint capital planning group put together to try to decide what the funding priorities are and how we're gonna meet those needs. The South Acton Train Station Committee is gonna be holding a hearing probably in June on raising the parking rates at the parking lot, the town's parking lot at the train station, so if you're interested in that issue, keep your eyes open for the publicity about that hearing. And finally, we expect probably to have a fall town meeting. It looks like now that at least the senior center, lease for space for the new senior center will be ripe for hearing, for consideration in a fall town meeting and other issues. So that's all I have on my report for tonight. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Peter mentioned the senior center, the RFP for the leased spaces, out on the street, so to speak, and I think the due date is the end of the month, so we'll be analyzing the RFPs once they come in. You may have noticed that the Highway Department has done some cleanup on the property formerly known as Walker, and, which has raised suspicion to some people that something actually is up there, but there's no truth to the rumor that it's a medicinal marijuana-growing facility. We are gonna be interviewing three firms to assist us with the electric aggregation in the community. We have a committee that I put together that has Mary Smith from Green Advisory Committee, Steve Long from Green Acton, Andrea Restine, the Municipal Properties Superintendent, Selby, Matt Selby, the Land Use and Economic Development Director, and myself. We're interviewing two firms this coming Wednesday night, one firm on the 18th, and then we'll have some deliberation and make a recommendation to the board as to a consultant on the electric aggregation. You may have heard that the town of Belmont turned down the capital improvement, the new school for Minuteman Tech. Not sure exactly what the next steps are. The superintendent of Minuteman did write a letter to all the towns saying that he's not sure that at this moment in time, a district-wide ballot vote would be in the best interest, but I guess the school committee is meeting this week or next, and we'll discuss it further. And also, we will be meeting with some representatives of the school tomorrow to talk about health insurance and what our goals are as we get our health insurance working group together again with the union, so we'll have a kind of a strategy meeting on that tomorrow. And that's my report.
Okay, we have a public hearing on a Class II non-display internet-only auto dealership under Mass General Laws, Chapter 140, Section 58. The Acton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on May 9th at 7:10 PM in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room at Town Hall, 472 Main Street Acton, on the application of Tony R. Elkhory, DBA Cars of Lebanon, for a Class II non-display internet-only dealer's license at 132 High Street, Acton. The application can be expected at Town Hall during normal business hours. Mr. Elkhory.
I don't know, this is my first time at a Town Hall. All I'm trying to do, I'm trying to get a dealer, non-display dealership for, to ship cars from here to overseas.
Oh, so I thought it was Lebanon, New Hampshire. You're talking about Lebanon in the Middle East.
Lebanon, yeah.
Okay.
Beirut, Lebanon.
Yep. Any questions by board members?
I saw, I don't know why I didn't get, I mean, I saw Lebanon, but I didn't get that you were shipping them from here.
It's Beirut, Lebanon.
What?
Beirut, Lebanon.
You're shipping them from here to there?
Yes.
Like, used cars, new cars?
Used car.
Used cars?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Are they usually, are they from a certain source? I'm sort of curious about.
Usually, we'll get them from Adisa.
From where?
Adisa Auction.
Oh, okay. Anyway.
And most of the stuff will be done online, that's me and our not even.
Right. I didn't have any concerns.
I have one question for Lisa. It looked like you originally had sent a memo to the Building Department along with the Collectors, Planning, and Police. Then the later memos were just the Collectors, Planning, and Police. I didn't see anything from Building. That's, it's a home, this is a home business, right? You're using an office out of your home?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So you're aware that you have to file a certification with the town clerk that you're operating a business in town?
Yes, they told me that I have to do that.
Okay.
I'm gonna move to approve the application of Tony R. Elkhory, Doing Businesses, Cars of Lebanon, for Class II non-display internet-only dealer's license at 132 High Street, Acton.
Second.
All in favor? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then what I would have to do, just come back tomorrow?
Yeah, just to see if you can.
We have to sign it tonight, and so you can pick it up in the town manager's office tomorrow.
Can I just ask him a question, one more? Are you, so have you been in the auto business before, or is this?
Yeah, I've been in the auto business in the 90s. I used to own Powderman Sonoco across from Swanson Pontiac years ago.
Oh, okay. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the Senior Center Study Committee Final Report. The report is available in our package online. Is there any questions or discussion, or?
I don't have any questions or discussions. The senior center, I was talking to Lisa, so I didn't hear, we're talking about the Senior Center Study Committee Final Report. The question that really came up in our last Senior Center Study Committee meeting, or, no, I think it was maybe the Council on Aging Board meeting, was really what the role is, you know, whether it was entirely clear that it was the right thing to do, to disband. People seem to think that we have done our charge and we're finished, and that we're not needed, but the question was, as we go through the process of, you know, the town, like Steve, putting together a committee to look at the RFPs, for example, the question was whether you'd want to draw upon us, whether there's any reason not to disband.
Well, yeah, that's an interesting question. I mean, looking at the RFPs is kind of technical, so we're gonna kind of a technical committee, but, you know, once we select the property, layout, design, how, you know, we're gonna obviously need an architect, we probably want some input, you know, maybe it is a little premature to disband, I'm not sure, but we want, may want to keep it open, or either that, or we come up with a different iteration to assist in some of those issues.
Yeah, that's what the committee itself is suggesting. They feel, according to their report, that the present committee should be disbanded, and that the Selectmen should set up some sort of successor committee to assist staff and provide public outreach and support for an eventual vote at a special town meeting for lease funding. So if that's the committee's wish, I, we should probably give that some consideration.
It is the committee's wish. Yeah, it definitely is the committee's wish, and it probably would be a different population of people. So, but it just makes more work for us to create a new committee, but it makes sense if people don't want to continue, or the majority of people, there might be a few people on it who do, but. Yeah, and I guess what also came up was whether you needed somebody else to go through, whether Steve, there was anybody else that you would want to have on the, looking at the RFPs, because every, there was one person who's a citizen, but a previous staff member, and then two staff members, and whether there was anybody else from?
Let me guess.
Oh, yeah? Dean. So the question was, was there any reason to have anybody else on that? But that doesn't really, that can discussion, that can be discussed in the future weeks, before the RFP comes in. But about this, that's, I'm approved of disbanding the committee, since the committee does want to dismantle.
So I guess it's a matter of formally accepting the final report and then formally disbanding them? Is that what?
Yeah, I think we should probably vote on that. It says, the outcome is probably not as anyone on the committee would have predicted at the beginning of the process. It was an open process, the committee kept an open mind. As noted above, the membership is somewhat depleted, and although there is still more work to do, some different skill sets are needed. So the question is, then, we should probably talk about is, what are we, what are we gonna do going forward with this, I guess? You're the liaison to the Building Committee as well as the Council on Aging.
The Council on Aging Board, who are clear that their charge is different from designing the new senior center.
Right. Well, maybe you can go back to them, though, and if we disband the committee, point out that that was the committee's wish, and they did suggest that we have another committee to deal with the whole issue of, you know, the new space, so get suggestions from them about what that committee ought to look like and who's, and who'll put a charge together and?
To shepherd through the process from RFP to design, to building, I mean.
I think once, you know, once, you know, first, our first, you know, job is to see, you know, once we get RFPs in, and we open them, that they're responsive, so assuming there are gonna be some responsive ones, you know, there may be a role with some, you know, council members or whatever to, you know, kind of view the, view the sites on the ground, so to speak, and get some input on that.
Yeah, I also think it looks like, what they're, they are suggesting is that this committee also be the Educational Committee and goes around to the boards and explains whatever, you know, we might have on the warrant in the fall, and garners support from both the citizens and town boards for the fall town meeting.
Yes. And actually, that reminds me, that's really what came up, is what we're gonna really need is a marketing push, and so that's part of, the people that we need. Yeah. So I move that we accept the Senior Center Studies Committee's final report, and we thank them for a lot of really hard work in the last year that led to this.
And second, and I would also reiterate the thanks, appreciation for all the effort that they invested, so.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. So we're on to the consent agenda. I'll simply read through the agenda and.
The Walker.
Is this? Okay. Did we get a separate?
Yeah, there's a separate.
Oh, the Walker, I'm sorry, the Walker.
It's one-page.
Property. We also, did we also have the agreement with a yes? Is that on the agenda?
Is that on consent? Or is that late? That was late, are we gonna discuss that?
Oh, that was after Saturday.
Yeah, that was after, 'cause we just got it Friday. Don't you have to post it? Post it as soon as you know it's gonna be part of the agenda?
Well, we didn't know till we got it on Friday, 'cause we've been back and forth between council, and we could wait till the next meeting, it's not a, it's not a biggie.
Yeah, I think I'd feel more comfortable, if that's okay. I'd feel more comfortable with that, yeah. Okay, I'm sorry, we've got the 348-364 Main Street property, formerly known as the Walker property, master plan, special committee, charge discussion. So we have in our package the charge that Selectmen Green put together for a committee consisting of 11 members, one representative appointed by the Board of Selectmen, one representative appointed by the Finance Committee, one representative appointed by the Economic Development Committee, one representative appointed by the Open Space Committee, one representative appointed by the Green Advisory Board, one representative appointed by either the Acton Housing Authority or the Community Housing Corporation, one representative appointed by Acton 2020 Committee, one representative appointed by the Historical Commission, and three citizens at large. Staff support provided by the Land Use and Economic Development Director, and the charge to the committee is to consider options for future use of the property and shall make written recommendations to the Selectmen within one year of its creation. written recommendations to the Selectman within, within one year of its creation. This is the property on Main Street, currently contains the Kennedy Landscaping Business, formerly owned by the Walker entity. It's been called the Walker property, we're going, now calling it the, formerly known as the Walker property, we need to come up with a new name, and we'll be going through a process to figure that out, but right now, it's formerly known as the Walker property, so.
I noticed it said "formally," it meant "formerly," I think we meant.
Formerly, formerly, yeah. Formerly, yes, in the past, as opposed to, like, kings and queens, formerly, so. Any discussion about the charge?
I just wanted to understand, I just noticed the wording is "appointed by the Board of Selectmen," "appointed by the Finance Committee," does that mean they don't have to be on the committees that they're coming, being appointed by? Is that the way it always is?
That's the sense, is that they're members of that committee, representing that committee.
Okay.
But I think usually, typically what happens is the committees, the constitu, the committees designate somebody, and then we just, at the end, approve the committee as constituted by all of these members of other committees, but, you know, we basically are appointing the committee as a whole, and not individuals, so they don't have to go through, well, I guess, who's, who's gonna, is it gonna be VCC, or we just have to wait for these committees to designate somebody, and then we have to do the, the people at large?
See, would be dealing with the at-large.
Yeah, yeah, so, we need to get that process started. I mean, it's fine, the, the charge is fine with me.
Not to be technical, but why do we say "appointed by," why don't we just say "one representative," consisting of one representative of the Board of Selectmen, one representative of the Finance Committee? I mean, or does everybody just understand that if something, if we're appointing, it's assumed that we're appointing someone from our committee?
Well, what? Actually, I mean, that, that can be confusing, I mean, we could just take the charge as is, but one, just change "appointed by" to "one representative from" or "of" the Board of Selectmen, and then, you know, I think, well, it says "appointed by" the Board of Select, designated, why don't we just say designated? Because we're not really appointing, these committees aren't really appointing the people, they're designating them as to serve on this, this other committee, that's typical, more technically what it is that they do.
Yeah, I agree with that point, that's, that's a good point.
Why don't we just say that the charge is fine as is, but would the modification that "appointed" be changed to designated?
Designated.
In all the places where it appears.
But it still doesn't get to my question, but maybe that's just standard language, when it says designated by the Board of Selectmen, designated by the Open Space Committee. It's assumed that they are on the committee that they're.
Yeah, that's, why don't we just say "one representative?"
From.
From.
From the Board of Select.
There is no, there is no standard language, I don't, I think.
Okay, "one representative from the Finance Committee," "one representative from the Economic Development," okay.
Yeah, so why don't we forget that?
So they are on those committees.
Right.
Okay.
But the understanding is that it's typically the committees that will figure out which member's gonna be the representative, so, yeah, we don't do that.
We could, we could say at the end, each committee will identify the designee from their committee, or something like that.
I don't think we need that, I think if we say "one, one representative from the Board of Selectmen, one representative from the Finance Committee."
I think, yeah, people know that's the process it works.
They'll have to vote to, to appoint that person, so, or designate that person, or whatever, so, with those, that change, I'll entertain a motion to approve the charge.
Move to approve the charge as modified.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Peter, do we have a time that this is gonna happen? Like, do we have a time pressure, or, like, when is this?
I think the charge itself says they'll complete their duties within one year.
So when would their first meeting be? Like, how quickly do these committees have to move?
I mean, there'll be three at-large members, they'll have to go through the VCC, so we'll have to solicit applications from citizens at large, as well as the various committee members, it's, it'll be some delay before the committee gets up and operating, I would think.
I have a question, who's, is there, is it really the town manager, or are you gonna be handling communications with these committees, or is Lisa, or is one of us supposed to kind of coordinate the effort and let the VCC know that?
Well, we'll let the VCC know that they need to come up with three, three names.
'Cause I, somebody needs to let all these boards know that they're supposed to.
No, we'll send, we'll send, we'll send the memo out to the board.
Okay. Good.
Yeah, the Beacon isn't here tonight, but we might wanna contact a reporter, and I guess I can do that, and see if she'll, maybe we need, I can write a little blurb or something for the Beacon to do some outreach for the at-large slots. Okay, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Number four, first item on the consent agenda is number four, approve the meeting minutes of March 7th, 21, and April 25th, I'm actually gonna hold that. Number five, approve executive session February 11th and April 25, 2016. Number six, Selectman to accept a gift of $400 from an anonymous donor to be used towards the SERVE program. Number seven, committee appointment of Barbara Epstein as a full member of the Open Space Committee. Number eight, committee appointment David Diedrickson, full member of the Economic Development Committee. Number nine, committee appointment Dean Charter, associate member of the Community Preservation Committee. Number 10, a committee appointment of Bill Alesbury, full member of the Community Preservation Committee. Number 11, committee appointment Alma Sandman, full member of the Council on Aging. Number 12, Selectman to approve financial assistance request from the Varnum Tuttle Fund, which is confidential documents.
I don't need to hold it, but I wanted to make a comment on it as we?
Sure.
Oh, should I wait till?
Yeah, why don't I finish reading it, and then you can make a comment. Number 13 is accept a gift for the Recreation Department, Selectman to accept a gift totaling $100 from the Healing Point towards the 2016 Summer Concert Series of Special Events. Number 14 is a request for a waiver of fees by the Acton Alliance Club Town Fair, June 6th to 19, 16 to 19, 2016. Number 15, one-day alcoholic beverage license auxiliary of Emerson Hospital, the Powers, at the Powers Gallery, May 21st, 2016. Number 16, one-day alcoholic beverage license for Donna McGavrick at Narrow Park on June 11th, 2016. Number 17, a request for disposal of obsolete materials of the Acton Memorial Library. Let me just talk about the number four, the minutes, first of all, I just had a couple of questions, I gotta pull them up here, let's see. I actually was absent on March 21st, but I, I vote on minutes, I think that's entirely legitimate, even if you weren't actually at the meeting, if the minutes are accurate. Talks about the ACHC presentations, there were two of them, 12 Powdermill Road, and the other one is 248 Great Road, I think it's supposed to be High Street, wasn't it, High Street?
It was High Street.
Okay, so that's just a typo, that needs to be corrected, that's all. That was March 21st. And then, let's see, we had to change in, there's a typo in the change to, let's see when we did that, the train station parking discussion. Anyway, I'll just tell you, Lisa, there was a, there was a typo, it said that one fee would go from 500 to 100, it should have been 50 to 100, that's all, just so that it's...
Listen, why don't I find it? Because I, I was the one who edited the minutes, so chances are, if there's a typo, I might have added it.
Okay, here it is, Selectman's business on, yeah, March 7th, I'm looking at, I guess it's top of page, it looks like, well, and online, it's page nine, but that's several minutes, it looks like it's designated as page four of six, in the second line on the top of page four, it says monthly fees for Jones Field from 500 to 100, so it should be just 50 to 100. So those are my only two comments on that, and I think we can vote on with those amendments on, as part of the consent agenda, Franny, did you have a comment about another item on the agenda?
Yeah, I just wanted to note that I would love to, you know, I was really happy that we're able to give financial assistance, assistance through this fund, but it seemed like a very small amount compared to the entire fund, and I wondered if we have any systematic way of looking at, and letting people know about this, whether we're getting the word out enough to people that financial assistance is available.
Is the Varnum Fund, oh, well, okay, do we have a, are they trustees of the Varnum Fund? Or is this just a separate fund? I mean, I know the Elizabeth White Fund has, like, a board that oversees it, right? Yeah, okay.
Because I hear a lot of people saying, "I'm leaving town because of high taxes," or, "I have a hard time with the amount of taxes in town," and I always tell people, "Well, there is tax relief," but I'm not sure if people are getting the relief that would make it easier for them to stay in town.
Yeah.
Well, the trouble is, probably it's not recurring relief, I mean, I assume that you can't just keep hitting on the funds for, you know, a series of relief payments, at some point, you, you know, you have to, but I don't, I don't remember how in our packet, what the material was, I remember seeing the data from the person who's seeking the assistance, but I don't remember if there was an introductory memo from somebody explaining administratively how it came to us, and?
Well, there's, there's a memo here from Brian McMullen, so I have a, I have a feeling that it's probably something that's designated for the assessors to grant relief under tax.
When they're, so they, they have the authority to do that in?
Yeah, and it's got, it shows, according to his memo, the Varnum Tuttle Memorial Fund shows a current balance of 122 grand, so it's a pretty substantial fund. Maybe you could ask Brian to just read us a brief memo about what, what the conditions are for granting relief under that fund, and how they let people know that it's available.
I mean, he does do a presentation about taxes and tax relief at the Senior Center.
Okay.
But, but I'm not sure, besides the Senior Center, if there's a way for people in general to hear about it, who might have need and might not be seniors, for example.
Okay, if he could give us a couple of sentences to answer those questions, that'd Okay, if there's no other discussion about the consent items, somebody wanna make a motion?
I move to approve, I'll start with everything but the minutes, 'cause you moved to approve consent agenda items five through 17.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes.
And then I move to approve consent agenda item four, with the changes to the minutes of March 7th and March 21st, that Peter already has described to Lisa.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously as well. Any other discussion?
I just wanted to add to my, I didn't even mention Minuteman in my Selectman's report, but I did talk this morning with the Selectman from Needham, who has been involved with the whole building project proposals probably since 2009, and to keep, sort of, long story short, yeah, there is a reason that the superintendent, in his letter to all the member towns, said he was not going to recommend that the school committee move forward with the district-wide ballot. There are some complications, and that does relate to the fact that Belmont, at town meeting, voted down the proposed debt issuance, there is a provision in the amended agreement that would enable a town that votes dissents in a district-wide ballot to pursue withdrawal from the district, and if, because Belmont has now reared its head, and apparently, you know, there, the concern is if they were to dissent, I think then, you know, you create the uncertainty, which we had tried to avoid through this whole process, and other staying towns may have some concerns about taking on additional responsibility for the cost. So I think that there probably will need to be some sort of discussion among representatives of the member towns about how to go forward. The last town that's gonna be voting is Arlington, which has a debt exclusion vote on June 14th, and I think that Dan Matthews from Needham said that in all likelihood, we're gonna have to have some sort of discussion before that, 'cause that's pretty, pretty far along, and we need to figure out what we're gonna do, so.
I had just a question about the AES, you know, we got in our packet the stuff about the memo of understanding with A, with Associated Environmental?
It didn't really make it on the agenda, and Steve says we can wait till the next meeting to do it.
Well, that was what you were talking about.
Right, yeah.
Okay, okay. I just had questions or comments about it, and I'll bring them next week.
Okay. As again, a motion to adjourn. I'm sorry.
Is there, is there any texts that Peter could, or somebody could read? Yeah, I remember seeing that, and I was wondering if I was gonna ask if it was on, had been added to the agenda, or if it was not an issue, but?
That was in that separate email you sent us.
Yeah.
Okay, with the AES stuff, okay, let me look that up.
It's an applicant, Echo Morgan &amp; O'Connor LLC. Would you want me to just read it in the wording of liquor licenses?
Sure.
Let me find it in my agenda. This was to approve a one-day alcoholic beverage license for Echo Morgan &amp; O'Connor LLC, for their open house for clients to celebrate the opening of the new office on May 11th, 2016. So I move that we approve that liquor license.
And I would add that I remember seeing that they do have a TIPS certified server who will be at the function, so I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
So, even though in the same area we have the AES, there's no problem with waiting till next time to do it? There's no deadline or anything? Okay.
I'm sorry, what's the question?
Oh, with AES, I'm noticing that they're both in the late coming mail.
Right.
Section, so I was wondering if there was any reason to do it, but it sounds like there's not. For, for, yes, yes.
So there isn't for AES?
But there isn't for AES, I was just confirming.
Town manager said we could wait until the next?
I moved to approve, I mean, I moved to adjourn.
To adjourn?
Adjourn.
Now, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
God, there's a lot of work when you're only three of you.